Item 7B, which is the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon City School District after the passage of the construction excise tax revisions in the last legislature. Who is doing the staff on that? Bill, is it you?
I can do it. Basically, yeah.
Okay, the next one?
I think the next one is okay.
That's also Dan. Are you doing the school district? Construction excise tax.
Don't say that, you'll jinx it.
Those are just amendments to conform with the legislative.
Yeah. It increases the percentage.
Yes.
That we get one fourth percent.
Okay, may I have a motion for adoption, please?
I'd like to move approval of amendment to the IGA with the Oregon City School District regarding the collection of how we, the construction excise tax.
Second, please.
Discussion.
I know.
Move by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Commissioner Smith.
I know that I probably don't need to do this, but as an employee of the Oregon City School District, anything regarding an agreement with the school district through the city, I probably won't vote on this, I'll just abstain.
Is there a discussion or comment? Nancy, vote please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Abstain.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris? Aye. Motion passes four zero with one abstention. Next on our agenda is the, I need to get the right agenda now. Statutory bargain and sale deeds for four pieces of property from the Oregon City, from the city of Oregon City to transfer to the Oregon City Urban Renewal Agency. Mr. Kobaysman?
I think you may have seen the other side of this transaction on the Urban Renewal Agency. Essentially, these are four pieces down in the Cove area that are being transferred, that are currently in the, held by the city, being transferred to the Urban Renewal Agency as part of the Cove development. So if you have questions about it, I'm happy to talk about it. But essentially, it's transferred to the Urban Renewal Agency so they can sum up part of the Cove development.
Talk about this at Urban Renewal. May I have a motion for, on this one, please?
Well, assuming, I'll assume there's going to be discussion, but I'll put forward the motion to go ahead and approve the, the sale of these conveying four parcels of property from Oregon City to the Oregon City Urban Renewal Agency.
One second, please.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West. Is there a discussion on this item? Commissioner Nacita?
Yeah, I voted for this transfer on the Urban Renewal Commission, but I didn't really make a statement about it. I have to make clear for the record two points. One, there's a distinction here. As a general matter of policy, I think it's probably a wise and good thing to transfer these parcels to the extent is that, so that everything in that redevelopment area, so designated, is in unified ownership. For example, right now, there's a narrow strip of land that used to be owned by the old interurban railway company from back, God knows when, the twenties. And it's been split, and it's in two separate ownerships right now. It seems kind of nonsensical. So solving that issue, I think, is decent policy to pursue. So on that basis, I voted for it, and will vote for it tonight.
Thank you.
The other hand, I also want to make clear for the record that I have a real problem casting this vote, because it actually enables, I may, I recollect the development agreement, this transfer is a condition in the development agreement for the Cove project. And I've been very vocal, and I've been outspoken about my concerns about the deal, not the project, but the deal, the financial deal surrounding that. I'm not even sure how many people know in the city, for example, that we are recompensing the developers of that project, about $1.2 million for the money they've expended on architectural and engineering fees. For the life of me, I don't know why that should be on the backs of the taxpayers of Oregon City. And I, you know, voted against the provisions of that deal, including the development agreement, because of, I think, I think the deal is very questionable. So.
To this motion, then.
But as far as, you know, what this requires, I don't want my vote to transfer these parcels to be interpreted in any way as a change of heart or a change of mind on my concerns about the Cove deal.
Thank you. For the comment, Commissioner Smith.
And I appreciate Commissioner Nacita's comments and agree with him. However, I will vote no, because I voted no, and I want to be consistent with my votes with Urban Renewal.
All right, ready for the vote? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four one. Next, we have the city manager's request. And this is related to Mr. Patterson's retirement and his request to work under the PERS system starting in January, which he has told us saves the city money. And so we ask for you to bring us back some evidence of that.
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the commission, you have a memo from Mr. Lefler that's setting at your place this evening, or it's coming out now.
Oh, yes, I didn't see that. Hot off the press. Thank you.
And it, this equates to a little more than what I indicated to you the other evening. The amount over the three months is $5,829.15. And you can see the breakdown there where the savings comes, really has to do with some of the things in that because you're working back under PERS and you're retired, not paying like the PERS payment is the biggest piece of that. Dental insurance goes away, the VIBA goes away, a couple of other smaller pieces there. And then also, health insurance drops considerably, so.
So if this, if we were not to pass this, then you would continue in the same contract that you were on today?
Correct.
Till March 31st.
Till March 31st.
Okay. May I have a motion, please? Commissioner Neely?
I am moved to cancel your PERS.
I suppose I could do that. That would cause a severe issue.
You can give me a more appropriate wording if you want to.
To accept Mr. Patterson's request.
To accept Mr. Patterson's request.
Well, you could say to retire effectively.
PERS request to allow city manager to retire the end of December and work back under PERS till March 31st.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. Second to the motion.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West. Is there a discussion on the motion? Commissioner Smith?
I wish we worried about saving money to the taxpayers at every meeting, but apparently it's a new thing. I will abstain, because obviously, I want to save the taxpayers' money, but I'm going to not vote on this issue. It will pass three to two, anyway.
And I don't understand why you wouldn't, I don't understand why you wouldn't vote on this.
I think I've made that clear at the last meeting.
In any case, it may well be it's three to one to one.
Well, thank you. I'm a massive parent.
Okay, is there a further comment? Commissioner Nacita?
Yeah, I'm pretty torn by this. Also, I still have some very, I think I'm still a little shell-shocked about what happened in this discussion on Monday, both in regards to Commissioner Smith's issues and my issues regarding having a performance evaluation for the city manager at this point. I don't think anything like this should be considered, except for within the context of an overall discussion about whether it be called a performance evaluation or an executive session regarding personnel matters, or however you want to state it. And, you know, whether this saves money or not, I still have that concern. And if that concern's not going to be addressed, I'm just, I just don't know how to vote on this. There, what, I mean, this, this should have been presented to us, I think, when Mr. Patterson read his letter of retirement at our work session. It certainly could have been presented as an addendum to the work, or the commission report that was presented us for last Monday's work session. I, you know, it's no secret that I have concerns regarding Mr. Patterson as city manager. And just, you know, to go with these concerns unaddressed, particularly in light of this issue with the records retention matter that I have been bringing to this commission's attention over the past several weeks, and the utter lack of interest in the commission's part of, you know, reviewing that as a job performance matter. You know, this is going to pass, I agree with Commissioner Smith that, you know, however I vote on this is kind of irrelevant at this point. So I'll probably join Commissioner Smith in abstaining on this vote.
Commissioner West?
Your vote is never irrelevant.
And I would like to say that this is not, that this request has nothing to do with Mr. Patterson's performance or not. It simply is a mechanism that benefits both him and his retirement and the city in saving $5,829, or $5,829. And so I'm sorry you have it wrapped up in performance, but the fact is, you know, you never give an employee a performance review as they're going to retire. It's irrelevant, it's a waste of, waste of time. And this is a simple, this is a financial deal here. So anyway, that's the way I see it. Sarah, for the comment or discussion?
Just, simply because the evaluation issue came up. The evaluation issue, I think, can perform two functions. One, is to evaluate the performance and indicate areas of improvement. Or secondly, to evaluate the performance and decide to terminate the services of the city manager. The city manager, in fact, has tendered his resignation. Now, we might, we might be in a position, if we had an evaluation, to decide to fire him, in which case, I think.
Very expensive.
It would be a very expensive procedure, so I think the only, the only function of the, of a evaluation would be to vent things that have probably already surfaced in the public domain, and I don't know that would serve any benefit. I mean, I would, I would have had areas, like I always had, of mentioning areas of improvement myself in the process, but I just don't, it would not result in anybody's termination, however. It would be a basis for what I would consider probably improvement. And every, every person has areas in which they can improve, no matter how long they've been in a given service. And so I think it's, it's, it doesn't, it would not, it would not, given the decision to resign, I don't think it would have any significant bearing on anything.
He didn't resign. He's retiring.
Retiring, other than, other to vent frustrations. And that would be done in a, in a private setting, and I think to one degree or another, it's been vented in a public setting, so I don't think it makes a whole lot of difference.
Yeah, I agree. It would be divisive, considering the. Yes, Mr. Patterson?
I've indicated before, is I am not adverse if you want to have an exit interview. And if there's those types of issues, you can definitely discuss those as well, but there's.
Just can't begin an executive session.
Yeah, it would be, it would be, but I don't think there's any secret here. And again, I know, particularly when it comes to minutes and things like that, that we'd have a strong disagreement on, or maybe how that, we see that, so.
Okay, are you ready for the vote? Commissioner Smith?
And I agree with what, what has been stated about evaluations. I think my main, and I would really, I think the lack of an exit, some sort of exit interview or something is, would be a mistake, so I hope that that's what we do.
Oh, no one has specified. I've been presenting that.
And so my concern really with the evaluation isn't so much that we haven't done an evaluation now that the city manager's retiring, but that's on top of a previous year without an evaluation. And so it's the, the, the lack of an evaluation for the last session, you know, last year, and the combination of the fact that, you know, we didn't know he was going to retire, you know, and I wasn't here. And so it, the question is, well, you know, why wasn't that done? And so that, in addition to another, yet another lack of evaluation, I think, is the real issue, not necessarily that we're not doing one now because he's retiring.
Yeah, that was another commission, and this is now, and this is a financial question. So ready for voting? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Abstain.
Commissioner Nacita?
Abstain.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
And Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes three zero with two abstentions. Okay, we've just moved up your retirement date.
Thank you.
Next, we go into the consent agenda. We have the minutes of three meetings. All those, Nancy, the vote, please. Or may I have a motion for adoption?
Move approval.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Next.
Just so I know whether to keep it or not, are we going to have the minutes of the October 21st available to us, you know, practically discussing the public works?
Oh, shoot, did we miss this? I'm so sorry.
Please, your.
I can hold on to the minutes.
If you.
It's beneficial for us to have the minutes.
If you, no, of the city commissions October 21st meeting?
That's right.
We can have them in there, yes.
Just take them out.
So I'm requesting.
That isn't in addition to the record, is it? The public works, master? Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move into the city manager's report.
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, I have two issues for you this evening. The first is, I'm going to call on Ms. Crushour to give you an update in regards to light at South End and Warner Parrot.
Thank you. I, to hopefully simplify things a little bit, I prepared a memo last evening that provides a chronology of the decision to remove the stop beacon at South End Road and Warner Parrot Road. And specifically, Commissioner Neely had requested a report on how the Transportation Advisory Committee had been involved in the process. And so the timing was very good. We had a Transportation Advisory Committee meeting last night, so I was able to actually tell them that this had been requested. And there was kind of a reiteration of the discussion that occurred at previous meetings. And then the committee sort of decided that they wanted to, they suggested I write a memo summarizing everything. And then one of the committee members offered to send a email of, I guess you'd call it testimony, to the city commission, it's not really a public hearing, but just it, sort of for the record, her viewpoint of how it had been dealt with. And then we also have, we have three members of the Transportation Advisory Committee in the audience, including the chair, Bill Blanchard, and then Don Slack and Betty Mum, both of which have been long, longtime members now for quite a number of years. And they've been involved in the entire process as well. So I could go through my memo, or you could just read it yourselves. I want to kind of know what you want, what's your preference on that?
Actually, my preference would be if you would summarize the, what happened at TAC.
Okay.
I think that's.
Okay. So at the, in the September meeting, we had Mr. and Mrs. Rickenbach from the South End area come to the Transportation Advisory Committee. I believe they had called, and then we recommended that they come to the TAC to, with their concerns. And at that meeting, the TAC, I was not at that meeting, because we have other staff at that meeting now, but the, the TAC invited them to return to the October meeting, because they weren't really prepared to discuss the item. And so they returned to the October meeting, and they also requested that, well, Jim Birch, who is the supervisor for the Street Division, and myself, who made the final decision on the beacon, were, attended the meeting so that we, so that there would be information there from staff as to the reasoning for the beacon removal. And all of that reasoning is found in the first page of the memo that I prepared. And at that meeting, we provided explanation about the beacon removal, and the TAC, we also heard from Mr. and Mrs. Rickenbach, and they're, they're also, of course, here tonight, patiently sitting through this very interesting meeting. And, and so they gave their concerns, and then we explained our reasoning and decision-making process. And then the TAC discussed it for quite a, for some amount of time, asked some questions of each party, of all the parties. And then they, with consensus, they agreed with the staff's decision to remove the stop beacon. And there's a lot more detail in here. The couple of things that the TAC focused on was the concern from the public that people aren't stopping at the stop sign. And they didn't feel like the flashing beacon really affects people rolling through stop signs. The purpose of the flashing beacon is to alert someone that the stop sign is ahead. And the choice of the, of a driver to roll through a stop sign is more of a behavioral thing. And if they, if you feel pretty safe at an intersection, or if you just, just don't, if you just don't want to follow the stop sign laws, you know, people do roll through intersections. And they felt that that was more of a law enforcement issue rather than a beacon issue. And then they also felt that it was important for the, for the, they supported the use of the manual of uniform traffic control devices to guide decisions like traffic control devices and other kinds of pavement markings, because that is a guide that's actually established by the federal government, that everybody's supposed, all right-of-way authorities are supposed to use to make decisions about signage and traffic control devices, so that there's a uniformity throughout the United States, and then expectations of drivers can, are all consistent, and it's applied consistently throughout communities throughout the United States. And then the other thing that they were, that they felt was, let's see, am I missing The other thing that was a good comment for staff, admittedly, is that when it's possible, depending on timing and resources and all of those things, it would be, they advised us to try to work with the pub, to try to be more communicative with the public when we're making changes, so that, and that would be something that we should strive for. From staff's point of view, we, we don't have a lot of resources to be providing lots and lots of information when we're on a tight timeframe and a tight budget, but it is still a good thing to strive for, and we agree that that would be a good, a good thing to work, work on, to get better at that. So that pretty much covers the TAC discussion. They also asked about the crash history, which Chief Mike Conrad had provided previously. This was last night, they asked about that. So that is, summarizes the TAC involvement.
So just to clarify that, your last comment about being, staffing proactive, so for instance, when the county advised Public Works to remove the beacon, you might consider going to the TAC to talk to them about that request before the removal? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Thank you.
I can't promise that we'll be able to meet that expectation every time, but I do think it's a good thing to strive for.
Okay, thank you. Are you ready here from?
Yeah, I was here.
Okay. Ingrah Rickenbach, I always want to use your own name, as a teacher of one of my children.
Do I have to push the button?
If it's bright green, you're just fine.
I'm Ingrah Rickenbach, and I live in Oregon City. And I just want you to know that in all these papers that we got tonight that talked about when my husband and I came and talked to the committees, we were representatives of the South End Neighborhood Association. We were asked to go and represent the feeling of the South End Neighborhood Association. And we still, as a South End Neighborhood Association, feel that the, the light should be there, that it is a danger to not have it there. We were told that it was against the law to put it back, because if they, if they didn't follow the rules from the thick notebook, then they would be going against the law. And then because we had an improved intersection, they had to go with the new rules. And yet, from our point of view, we live three houses from the corner, and it's not an improved, I mean, it, they took out, they put in another lane on South End, and the people who live on Lawton are concerned because they're using that as a turn lane, but it's really a parking spot, and it's confusing as to what's what right now. And I know we went through the process of talking to different people. My husband and I are representatives of the South End Neighborhood on the Citizen Involvement Committee. We've gone to that. We have been asked by our neighborhood to go to the TAC committee. And so we've gone, not just in September and October for our special concern, but we also were there to listen and find out what was going on, so we could take it back to our neighborhood. And there are people in the neighborhood that are still concerned that something's going to happen. And I know in the thing that you had that was from Nancy Walters, from the, the TAC committee, and she said that the school has maintained a strong crossing guard program. They do have a crossing guard program, but when the crossing guards are afraid to go out in the street, because of the, you know, it's, it is hard for them to cross people. And so I just wanted to make sure that you, as a city commission, knew that the people in the South End Neighborhood Association are still concerned that we have a lack of a light on South End and Warner Parrot and Lawton.
Thank you. Commissioner West?
I'd like to ask Chief Conrad if he was able to redo his police, so that we were, police shift changes, that we were going to have aid on a shift mid-afternoon, if we would have any more chance at having enforcement or a speed, or what do you call it, a traffic unit? And can address people rolling through stop signs and have maybe somebody at that stop sign a little more frequently?
Yeah, even now, before step, step numbers increase, we can certainly increase patrol in those areas, as we do in other problem areas. We're not going to, we're not going to be going to the overlap shifts until we can go to four 10-hour shifts, and that doesn't occur until we get everybody out of training. And it has to coincide with shift bidding under the collective bargaining agreement, which will take place in, the shift bidding takes place in January. The actual shifts won't be filled until probably September. But we can, as in any other type of traffic problem in the city, when we have available resources, we do try to direct them there. At this particular intersection, even though I understand the concerns of the neighbors, it has not been a problem, according to our statistics, because we've only had five accidents there in the last five years, and not one accident in the last three years. So it hasn't been.
It was just stated there was one just this week.
Well, no, it wasn't this week, but it was within the last six weeks, when the channel eight came out.
Well, unless. Well, unless, I'm obviously going off, sometimes our statistics are a little bit behind and everything. We haven't compiled yet or caught up. So, if that is the case, um, if there's not a police response, then we don't get statistics to it. So, if it was just an accident that happened and, and nobody called the police and we didn't respond, then we wouldn't be aware of it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, other comments on this? Commissioner Smith?
And I appreciate this memo because it does answer some questions and it links the process. The one thing, unfortunately, the, of all the things, all the topics we've had in the last couple of months, the one thing that I didn't have time to go back and check, which I've wanted to for weeks, was the original report that we were given for the paving project. Because my memory, and like I said, I haven't gone back to check it, but my memory from that report was that it was stated that it was going to be removed temporarily and then put back. If we approved that, and it actually alludes to that a little bit without saying as much in this memo, it says that, um, it was going to be taken down for the paving project and that Public Works would reconsider reinstalling it, beacon afterwards. So, it at least mentions that it was taken down for the project and that it implies that there was at least some plan to put it back up, but that was debated. I think if we approve this, if we approve the South End paving project and in that document that we approved that night about that project, it says that they were going to reinstall it after the project, then we needed to have reinstalled it back after the project. So, that's, that's one of my concerns. And I, I think we need to go back and check to see what we were given, what we actually approved. But the other, some of the other questions I think have been answered. I think the one was about, you know, we have had a traffic accident, it sounds like. The first people that complained to me about this were police officers that said, "What is going on?" Um, I had several police officers complain to me about it and wondering what was going on. And, and I basically at the time said, "Well, as far as I know, it's going back up after the paving project", which didn't happen. Then I started getting, um, comments from the schools, especially people at King School. And then, a good portion of my family lives in that neighborhood, so I heard from them as well. And, and so, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of people that were really concerned about this intersection. And, I, I, so I, I still have some concerns about it. And I, I have a little bit of concern, I guess the way that it was put in this memo, that under citizen input, it says that, um, that the Rickenbachs voiced their concerns. Well, we were just told that this was the, they were representing their neighborhood association. And so this was broader than that and that if they were representing the neighborhood association, that citizen input piece here on this memo actually carries a lot more weight if it's coming from the neighborhood association than if it's just coming from two citizens.
Right, and, um-
And so I think this is a little steeping-
I wasn't aware that they were, probably, could be that the TAC was aware that they were representing the South End Neighborhood Association. I associated them with the phone calls I got when they called me and it's, you know, it's just a deep- And, and also I wrote this late last night, so it could be that, I mean, I wasn't thinking about making sure that that was up- But I really didn't know that.
They're representing the neighborhood, that's a lot bigger concern than-
I, I did receive a copy of that letter, which you guys received from the South End Neighborhood Association.
I'm not convinced it's completely resolved yet. I, I mean, I'm okay with some of the things that I, you know, that the county advised to remove it and I didn't know that piece before. Um, and I knew a little bit about a truck hitting it. But, so I think some of the process has been answered, but I'm still not completely okay with where we're at on it.
Commissioner Neely.
A question first. Am I correct in saying that the county actually repairs our signals?
Yes, we contracted the county for our traffic signal maintenance.
Yeah, I think the, there might have been an inference that the, the county mandated, I don't think it mandated, it suggested it. And, I guess, I guess it's a, um, you're going to what I consider a, what I'll call a conservative device, if we're going to see that, you know, to a less conservative device, the stop signs. And, I, I don't know why, other than it gives them one less signal to repair in the system, I don't know why they would advise us on that at all. I mean, it, it, you know, okay, it's an urban area, they use it more in rural areas and so forth, but the point is, it alerts you to the fact you're coming to a place you're going to stop. You, you can miss a stop sign if you're, if you're a visitor to Oregon City, but you're not going to miss that red flashing light. And, I think you had cases that, that where the city had, and this is a recollection from when I served on the Traffic Advisory Committee, had actually removed some stop signs. I think they were, I think they were in the Tower Vista area or something. They, when they were put forward, put up there, they were put up there, I think, at the recommendations of the Neighborhood Association, but didn't fit the criteria of stop signs. And I think at one point, they were removed and I think they got a lot of flack at that time. But I don't think, uh, the, the neighborhood was invited to the Transportation Advisory Committee to comment on their potential removal. In this case, it's not clear to me that the Neighborhood Association was invited to a Traffic Advisory Committee or that the Traffic Advisory Committee even acted on the decision to have the light removed. Is that true or?
That's right. We, Public Works made the decision. And we make those decisions a lot, that's kind of my job.
Well, no, I, I understand that.
But, in this situation, because there were concerns brought, we recommend, oh, well, if you have concerns about that decision, come to the Traffic Advisory Committee because they're the sounding board, they're the advisory committee, the city commission on traffic.
The thing is, I think, I think a decision to go to a more, from a more conservative device to a less conservative device, as a warning device, uh, does have the potential. Even, even though you're, if you had one accident, uh, since that light's removed, it surely won't affect your average you were talking about. And that, you'd probably have to get a lot, a couple more years of data to even know that that was the case. But, um, when, when you've had a more conservative device, you go to a less conservative device, that does exactly this, that's telling the drivers to do exactly the same thing, um, generally I would suggest you keep the more conservative device on hand. And, and I don't, you know, I'm just wondering whether the county gave that advice based on what an urban area should do, rather than a case that it's just one less signal they have to maintain.
No, they get paid to do that, Commissioner. They're paid for their work. And I, no, I, they have a very good working relationship with us and they, there's some extremely experienced, folks with a lot of, a lot of traffic signal expertise because that's what they do throughout the entire county and they do it for some of the other cities as well. And they recognize the fact that, these days, that particular device is not what's used for, um, for alerting people to a stop sign ahead. The, in a, in an urban setting, um, the, the flashing device is used, for example, if you're on a rural road and you're driving and you haven't seen a thing for miles perhaps and you come to a four-way stop, I mean, you kind of have to get out of your, out of your zone to recognize that you're approaching a four-way stop. When you're in a rural, or when you're in an urban area, and especially the South End Road has developed considerably, um, the, the current recommendation from the MUTCD is to use the stop-ahead signs. And not only did we use regular, we used oversized stop signs, reflect, highly reflective, plus stop is set on three inters, three of the legs of the intersection. So, we believe that we're following the current professional standards for that, for the application of traffic control devices at that intersection.
Well, I'm going to make a request. When it comes to doing anything at 12th Street and Washington, that if you do anything there, you make it a more conservative one, not a less conservative one. We got a flashing light there.
This reminds me a little bit of our Lynn Avenue study, um, that, that, back to this one, where the accidents don't warrant necessarily, uh, going back, where the Transportation Advisory Committee studied it and they're, they're, uh, don't find that it warrants a change, but yet the neighbors are certainly concerned. And, I'm wondering if we, and I know, as, as an intersection, I go through all the time and I nearly, I, because I was looking for the flashing light and wasn't attuned to looking for the stop sign, I've had to really readjust my habits. So, I'm wondering if this is something that we could look at in time? Um, that six to nine months, six to 12 months, um, we can look at it again, look at the, look at accident reports? Maybe it fixed some of the things the neighborhood was talking about, like, um, that parking strip and maybe there's some other, um, sign adjustments or something, maybe the stop sign's too close. I, I don't know any of that, but, um, maybe there's some things that we can do then revisit to see if it, if it is a trouble spot in that period of time. Because right now, um, I, I'm in honor what the neighbors say, but when we've looked, when we look at both safety from the accident standpoint and what the TAC said, um, you know, it doesn't really support a change. You want to come back to the microphone? You, you need to come to the back of the microphone.
I'm Ingraham Rickenbach from Oregon City. And, um, I'm really concerned because as a citizen in Oregon City, I've been doing my part to attend the meetings. And when, when I talked to Nancy, she said, "Well, the citizens have decided this. It's gone before the citizens committee." I said, "I've been at the TAC meeting and they hadn't discussed any of these things." I didn't go to all of them, but I went to quite a few. And she said, "Well, this, you know, the CIC meets on that." I said, "I'd go to that." And, I'm very frustrated as a citizen. When you say the TAC meeting discussed it, the first meeting, they tabled it because staff wasn't there. The second time that we met in November, they put it at the end of the agenda so they could call Nancy on the little walkie-talkie to have her come out and tell them how it was going to be. So, it wasn't really a discussion of the citizens, other than the citizens on that committee who said, "Okay, we'll go along with staff." And so, I'm concerned about how much input you, or how much emphasis you put on the TAC committee because I don't see that, I mean, that is a representative of maybe 10 people in the city. And, but, um, I don't know that it's a representative 10.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I hear your concerns about citizen involvement and it's been a concern for me for a long time. We have an interesting way of, um, dealing with that. I still think though, you're going from a rural setting to an urban setting, you're going all the way from Canby with no stops, um, and, you know, until you get to that one section, so, and, which is why it was that way in the first place. So, so in a way, it's still very much set up, I understand there's been development up there, but you're going a long time, um, from Canby with no stops and then all of a sudden, there it is. Well, 99E, yeah, from Canby. I don't think that was hard to understand.
I knew what you meant, it wasn't quite Canby.
Um, so I, I think, you know, and I, you know, there has been development, but still that, it's still in the, the situation that, that you kind of mentioned in terms of what flashing red, what reds are for. Um, I, I think there definitely needs to be some input from the school district or the school itself because I have concerns about that. I, um, I, but I think besides just, it's more than just the flashing light. It's, it's, is it a turn lane, is it not? Is it, you know, I guess there's no parking signs now there to say that you can't park there, so that now is it a turn lane, but is there arrows to go in there? I don't know. I haven't actually driven by lately. I'm sorry, parents, I haven't visited you in months and months. I, I, so I don't know, I've, I used to drive up there a long time, a lot, but I don't even know what it, what is there. But I know I've heard issues about people not knowing whether it's a turn lane off to the side or it's parking and how it's striped or, or that. So I think that maybe needs to be looked at and I'll probably have to drive up there to look at that too, but. And if you're, my comments specifically about citizen involvement were not necessarily directed at the, the Traffic Advisory Committee specifically. Uh, it was a general statement about the past reputation that this city has had for, um, negating citizen involvement. And, and one of the reasons that I chose to put myself in this ridiculous position up here was to tackle some of those issues. I mean, running for city commission was one of my reasons for doing this. So, I know that people, and I, I hear from citizens every day and, and the vendor, um, vendor tonight is just one of those examples where everyday citizens come to meetings and meetings and meetings and meetings and meetings. And how many meetings do they come to before they give up? And guess what? A lot of them give up. And, um, and so it's a lot easier, it's a lot easier to make decisions as a city when the citizens give up. And that's why I have to tell you, and I've told, I told, um, the Rickenbachs at the CIC meeting and I tell everybody, "Don't give up. Don't give up. You keep coming to meetings, you keep telling people your viewpoint. That's the only way things get done. That's how this works." So, don't you dare give up, no matter how many horrible, lengthy, ridiculous meetings you have to go through. You keep coming until it's fixed, if it's a problem. And, um, so, I think, that's my viewpoint on that.
Let's move on to two very devoted, uh, members of the TAC who haven't given up.
My name's Bill Blanchard. I'm chair of the Transportation Advisory Committee for the city and we do advise you, the city commissioners. Uh, the Rickenbachs, if I said that right, uh, came to us in the first meeting and we had no idea why they were there and, and so I let them speak. I didn't keep in a no-three-minute rule and all that kind of stuff, I don't believe in that. I think that we need to hear from our citizens. And I said, "Okay, well, does the rest of your neighborhood agree with what you're saying?" You know, I only had two people saying that. I says, "Well, go back to your Neighborhood Association, talk to them, get something." They went back to the Neighborhood Association, talked to them, got some documents signed that said we are in support of doing this sort of thing. We listened to staff, we listened to them at the next meeting. Oddly enough, the Rickenbachs- Did I say that right?
Thank you.
I don't mean to do that wrong. We're the only ones that showed up from the neighborhood.
But if they were speaking for the-
So, so they were speaking for the neighborhood, I understand that. And, we took the advice of the staff and supported what the staff had said based upon the manual of uniform traffic control devices and what they did. The communication that I'm concerned about right now, as you mentioned, Commissioner Smith, is they went before the CIC, which we had no clue was going on. I suggested to the staff last night at our meeting that maybe they start doing a little outreach type of thing, which Nancy Kay talked about tonight. So, we try to do the best we can to advise and work with the commission. I think this is a lot better process on this situation than one of them that happened when I first became chair that went to you folks first, never, then got kicked back to us. I think that's kind of putting the cart before the horse. So, I'm glad to see the process starting to work a little bit more the way it was intended. The one thing I have to do a little bit of a pitch for, I was a police officer in town, started in '76 and in '78 they did a study, the feds. They put in three traffic officers because they found we were the highest fatal injury and accident rated state, uh, city-
Yes, we were.
-in the state above Portland. So, we worked for many years to get that done, with traffic, engineering and education in the state, the three E's that you do in traffic. One of the things that they recommended back then is this city was big enough in 1978 to have a half-time traffic engineer. Now, later on, a few years later, we tried to work as a city with Gladstone and West Lynn to come up with enough, pony up enough money to have a full-time traffic engineer. This is 2009. The only thing I've seen that's really worked well, I don't know what we did, I think your engineering is the primary reason why it's better, is we are no longer on the radar for first or second in the state in fatal injury accident rates. And we've been that way for a while now.
Three years.
Some of that had to do with engineering and some of it, from my own background, had to do with the police department, traffic engine, uh, traffic enforcement, things like that. So, I just want to put that plug in there and, and bug in you guys and gals' ears that, uh, we still really need to maybe consider something about traffic engineering. I'm glad that we have the county because they have paid professional traffic engineers. When they give us advice- When they give us advice, it's coming from professionals, because we can't afford, I guess at this time with the economy the way it is, to hire a full-time or half-time traffic engineer. That's just my passion is traffic, so I had to make that plug. And we're trying to work with the citizens. As you know, I'm exiting and retiring from the Transportation Advisory Committee, but I would like to see a little bit better communication between the groups, the CIC, which is just getting started, the TAC, and the commission. I'd like to see that, I'll watch on TV from now on.
Thank you.
And I did talk with Damon Navy, the Chair of the CIC, he said this was not a CIC issue, it was part of the ground level, and it mostly was not a CIC issue. So they did not test me on that either way.
I forgot one thing, I'll be quiet after this. I did recommend, which I've heard here tonight, is it takes six months in any traffic change for the public, the motoring public, to adjust to the new traffic change. So I suggested maybe in six months, which I heard you say, Your Honor, or Mayor Norris, to do something like that, I said that to the Rickinboks at the last meeting that they were there, that they might, we want to revisit it in six months or nine months, because it might not work, it might need some more adjustments or whatever, to have a looksee at it, not to be so inflexible that we couldn't look at it again after it's been given a chance to work.
Okay. What do you want to do with that, commissioners? Commissioner Smith?
Were you first?
She calls the first.
We're going to have buttons here soon.
No, I think, I just would like to look back to see what, what was actually given to us when we approved the South Road paving project, and see if it actually said in there we were putting this light back up, because if we, if it said in that document that we were putting this light back up, then it needs to go back up. If not, then we can deal with, I think, I really think we need to look at that, because if, if we okayed that south end paving project knowing it was going to go back up, then it needs to go back up until it came before us again. So I think we need to check that first. And if it's, if it doesn't say that, I know that I'm fine, and we can kind of figure out where the process goes from there, but if, but if it says it in there, I think that needs to be addressed.
Another thing, if I might, that's more of a general nature, is that, I won't say time permitting, but I don't want to really preface it with anything like that. If we're going through a, from a more, I'm going to call it a more conservative traffic control device to a less conservative one, then I think it should be reviewed by the TAC before the changes occurred. My understanding that the change was either occurring or had already happened when you reviewed it.
That's what Nancy talked about.
And that, and I think if we're going from a more conservative to a less conservative one, you ought to look at it before that happens.
Yeah, that's what, that's what they suggested in the letter, and that's what Nancy responded to earlier, and I like that idea as well. Okay, is there anything, action that we need to take tonight? Nancy?
I guess a little question about the, the contract approval that was, occurred on, when we awarded the south end bid, you know, it, things, I guess I'm confused, I hear what you're saying, but I guess I would just say that we weren't, we didn't get authorization to do every item that was done there. The authorization was as part of the contracting board to approve the contract in the amount of, so, just wanted to make that point.
I just want to know that if I was told it was going back up, why it didn't go back up?
Isn't that as extenuating circumstances?
I understand.
One more comment? I'm being proud to make sure.
Okay.
Based on what we heard from everyone at our TAC meetings, there was a learning curve issue on the light being taken out because it didn't meet the MUTCD standards. Understand what you're saying, Commissioner Smith. However, if it is a civil liability issue that we're not, we're disregarding the MUTCD by putting it back up, then I think we need to make sure we're not putting ourselves in civil liabilities, even though we said, and we probably did, I don't doubt what you said happened, but we've learned something since that time, and I just would feel more comfortable as Chair at this point until the end of December, that we would make sure that we're on solid footing, whether it's city attorney or traffic engineers, before we go putting it back up or keeping it down. And I have faith in our city engineer to have done that homework already.
So do you want to look at this again in nine months, or, something like that?
Yeah, he's made the request, and I think that request should come forward.
For what?
What was in the document that we had.
Oh, that, that too?
Yeah, not nine months.
Oh, okay, yeah, but what do you want to do about the?
Well, we can find out, we won't do anything until we find out what the, he wants to answer the question, that doesn't mean we're going to take action on it.
No, I know, but, okay, so till, so that, so no, no action until that piece of information comes forward? Okay.
And then if you choose to take action, will you invite the TAC to be back?
Different nice.
No, that's important. It's important to, important to have that involvement. Okay, thank you very much for your testimony, I appreciate that. Ready to move on to the next one?
I think Mr. Rickinbach wants to speak.
Do you have a question? Please come forward. You'll need, you need to come forward and introduce yourself.
We also need the mic to record you.
Talk into the microphone.
David Rickinbach, Warner Perret Road. And one of the things that would have been nice, is as I called to ask people why they weren't going to put the light back up, or what it was, I got all sorts of explanations. I had explanations of, oh, they wanted to save, the reason they took it out is they wanted to save energy. Oh, no, the reason they wanted to take it out was, it's not necessary. I had all sorts of explanations. It'd be nice if you got your ducks in a row, and so we knew what was going on.
Thank you. Okay, next, you're still, we're still in the city manager's report? Okay.
Well, this one probably will even take longer. You had talked at your work session on Monday about some type of short-term program for the EOITC. There's two issues that you have, and let me kind of talk through a couple of these. First is the operation of the center, and what you may or may not want to do there, and then there's also the operation of the VIC, the Visitor's Information Center. You have a little bit of documentation at this place this evening, you have a short note called the Visitor Center Information, and kind of what they have there now, if I understand this correctly, and I just received this before I walked in, is through funding from TDC, you have one full-time paid person, one part-time paid person, one part-time volunteer, and then there's a CHP bookkeeper there, I'm not sure how much longer that person will be there. So the visitor center has indicated they need a few things. They need someone to be the employer of that staffing, and they have, I think, a budget of $60,000 a year to fund that staffing that goes through June. They also have the need for information dissemination, and also someone to maintain the 800 number. And then they also ask for maintenance in the area and cleaning the restroom, which we have picked up through the Parks Department. If the city steps in to being the employer of these individuals, there's some additional costs that are going to be incurred there in doing that, because they'll be, they'll become city employees, and of course, the full-time person, depending on how long the part-time person works, they'll qualify for city benefits as well, so those costs are going to go up some. That's one issue, and then incorporating that in where you want to go with the operation of the entire EOT, that's, that's another issue and what that will take. I've also given you this evening, you have talked about the income stream off of the Tumwater houses, and I've given you both a flow sheet looking at 2008 for both individual houses, and a compilation of that, as well as this year for the 313 and 214 addresses. And you will see for the year 2008, 2009, the net income after expenses on houses is $5,177. So, you know, I don't think that is a significant amount of dollars. I think the question really becomes, what do you want to do there? And if, you know, if that is something you wish to operate, and kind of can define, or we work through a process to find what we want to do, then staff can come back with some recommendation of how you would fund that.
Commissioner Nocita? The $5,177, that's just for one of the houses, correct?
That is both.
But what's the total up there, $13,000?
You also have, well, that's expenses through there, that.
It's, this spreadsheet seems to me to read that the income, the net revenue on 323 South Second's $13,000, and the net revenue on 214 Tumwater is $5,000.
Could be correct. Again, they, and either way, it's $18,000. If you do it that way, it's $5,000, if it's the other way. So, you know, that's the breakdown of that, I can get clarification from Ms. Griffin, who put that together. But again, depending on what you want to do there is.
That's two years.
Yeah, you have.
Total, that's just two, that's two years, it's 13, 29, it's 2008 plus 2009 equals.
Either way, without bogging down there, I mean, it's a question of what you want to do, then we can, we can, we can figure out a budget for that, and I'll need to figure out how we're going to pay for that for you, I think that's, that's the question. In fact, you know, that's really, from a commission perspective, I just need to know what you want to do, and then turn us loose, and we can figure out a way you can get that.
What this shows me is that what we were concerned about at the work session is the, what the county was concerned about, security, but the county's kind of taking care of that. And this essentially buys us some status quo time, if that's, if that's okay with us, while we convene the task force and work through the revisioning and what, what we want it to be. And so to me, this relieves my mind of having to provide something extra for short-term security. The, the thing that we'll have to deal with is whether it's okay to have CHP or another nonprofit, you know, be the right, the pass-through for the staffing, because I think that that's important. It helps to keep those expenses kind of in line during this transitional period. So to me, that, that makes, makes sense. And towards the funding, I would just direct the city manager to find a source of funds that works. We need, we know that we need a definite amount of funding for the RFP, see what you can come up with. If not this, then a combination of things, perhaps. See Commissioner Neely? I saw you first, and then Commissioner West.
I don't think I raised my hand, but I am a bit confused. We do, we had, we had the funds coming through June from.
TDC.
From the TDC period. Now, could you explain to me what the additional funding through June would be, from the city?
Oh, they, again, they budgeted, my understanding is $60,000, which they're funding the staffing for that. They do that through a contract through CHP.
Does that have to?
It's my understanding that you want, you do not want to do business with CHP for this operation.
That's correct.
So one of the needs they have is someone to employ those people, because theirs is just a money thing, they don't do it. If the city were to become the employer, what they're paying these individuals, there's additional costs that we're going to incur in terms of city benefit package, things of that nature.
No, my question then is this, that if they are, if they are our employees, and if within their responsibilities, there could be other things that could be done, is the city in a position to go ahead and direct those staff to do other things?
Well, we'll, we'll need to go through a process to define the job and this, that, and the other.
Yeah.
And I would assume that we could write that into whatever job description that we developed at that particular point, and they could choose to either work for us or not work for us, I suppose.
Yeah, okay.
Supervision then becomes.
Negotiations to do with that, but.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner West?
I just want to make sure I understand this. So CHP has budgeted through June of 2010, one full-time paid, one part-time paid, one part-time volunteer, and something about a bookkeeper.
But that's not.
That's my understanding, looking at this this evening.
Yeah, that's not theirs.
Well, what do you mean?
The CHP employee is, the county's not paying for that person. That's a leftover.
Yeah, that's a leftover, finishing up some stuff with that bookkeeper and not.
Oh, with the bookkeeper, but the rest, CHP has budgeted some staffing, one full-time and one part-time through June of 2010.
Best I understand it anyhow.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Okay, so under needs for visitor center information, and then the telephone number, is that, that's what we're essentially talking about hiring a person to do, correct? Or possibly?
Possibly. It depends on, if you want the program wider than this, of course, we'd.
What is this referring to? Can I be, can you be more specific on this, on what this means? And whose telephone number it is? It's the county's, right?
It's the TDC's, yeah.
Okay. So, this is a tough one, and, and because a great majority of the county's heritage sites are in Oregon City. So Oregon City has probably a little bit more responsibility to be involved than maybe other communities that don't have so many, I mean, that we're providing information for. But the concern would be, is that we're essentially subsidizing a county visitor's center that's selling the whole county off. So our employee would essentially be doing a county job. And I kind of, I mean, it is our building, so it does serve, you know, some purposes in terms of this selling Oregon City, and, but I don't know if it's, I don't know if I can support spending the entire amount of money for an employee that's really working doing someone else's job, or selling someone else's vision, too. It's, it's similar to paying rent for the chamber, in that we are basically paying somebody to work for somebody else. And, so I want to clarify that a little bit more. You know, we're going to, our staff person essentially, our city staff person is going to be selling and directing people all over the county, not just to Oregon City. So I understand, you know, Oregon City has a benefit to it, but we should, we're not really responsible for doing that whole job. So that's one, one concern. I'll stop there for a second.
Yeah, we won't, if the tire employee, we won't tell them, the rest of the county exists.
It's actually, it's the, it's the TDC's visitor's center, it's that regional visitor's center. And the two things that the TDC needs out of a visitor's center are, they need, they need a place for information dissemination, and they need a place for the 800 number. And that other spreadsheet that you've been provided shows you the number of visitor contacts, which is pretty substantial.
Well, so I think my point is, then, why are other communities in the county not also helping pay for this position as well? So.
So the logic text goes to.
Yeah. I think that's the. So, I mean, this is not going to be just a burden on Oregon City.
Well, it depends what you want to do. I think in the short term, we probably, we may fall into that, depending on where you want to go with. I think the task force you're talking about, I think that's some of the issues they're going to need to talk to.
For future.
Because I think if you're going to operate a visitor's, my understanding from Linda Bell, is normally they receive also money from the state, and I don't think that we do here. So that's another area we need to talk about, but I think that's that longer-term discussion about how we operate all of that.
And, and I'll just throw this out here, because it's something, and it probably isn't applied directly right now, but in that discussion, you know, if it's our employee, then we can kind of think about how we sell Oregon City as a package ourselves. And one of the things that I've been thinking about when I've been driving all around Oregon City is that big marketing campaign, Historic Oregon City, is owned by CHP. All of our signage throughout the city is Historic Oregon City, the website's Historic Oregon City. Oregon City, and that's CHP's. So, that's a dilemma, because this image that we're promoting citywide to promote our city is CHP. And, and so, what, is there a way that the city can take over that marketing campaign that we've really put a lot of effort into, and, and have this staff person really focus on selling Oregon City specifically? And that the city as a, as a whole, that the city itself kind of takes over that, that image, because it's our image. But we don't really have control over it. And I don't know the ins and outs of how we go about that, but I, it's something that we need to talk about, because it's a, it's a, as a graphic design person, I mean, that's a, a statement that's, that was well-designed, and is starting to appear all over the city. And so, we are really, have someone else controlling a marketing campaign for our city. And unfortunately, the people that are, that are driving that campaign don't have a very good reputation in terms of the success. So, I think it really kind of confuses the message that we're selling as a city. So, I think that's another piece that needs to be talked about.
If I could try to simplify it, because I think what, what we asked for was, I mean, we know we want to do the RFP, for someone to do the long-term planning. What I think this shows to me, because I was kind of excited to see it, is that if we could allow the contract to run through June while the public process is going on, then we buy time. And then, in July 1, you know, that could be one of the targets for, you know, what will the visitor's center be and who runs it. But, you know, for now, yeah, I mean, I understand all the difficulties they have them, too. Then, I mean, I think all the things like marketing, and that can all be dealt with within the, the task force that will be created. But, so I think it's, is, the question is, is this okay for the short term, so that the RFP can really address, you know, the long term? That, that I think is the simplest way I can bring it. Commissioner...
Well, you, you may have remembered at the work session, I talked about a short-term business.
Right, that's why...
The citizens, the citizens that I expected to come here and speak to that weren't here, but that's fine. But I, I do think it gives us that kind of mechanism, and that's why I raised the question, to what degree can we specify what the duties of the employees are? And to that degree, we, we may be able to do some things that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise. And so, I, I think this is a, I think, I think from my standpoint, it's a go, as long as there is an understanding that we may have somewhat different expectations of the employees than, than the TDC or the county currently has.
What's the...
The city manager.
Yeah. You, you're talking about moving it to city management?
Yep.
Moving it to city management, okay.
And we have discussions about what, what we're managing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that will be with the, with the county, because they provide the funding.
I understand that.
Yeah, okay.
But they're our employees.
They...
They don't, they don't manage them. But they're, they're our employees, and they're our employees.
That's right. Yeah.
Now, that's something the city manager, the city manager's, I'm sure, are the things that they must do in any case. And I'm not questioning that. But I've got, I've gotten nothing but nods from our city manager on that question.
Yeah, and that may be a really good transition to, to, I like that, too. Okay? Is that, are we all in agreement on that?
So, they are going to become Oregon City employees?
Yeah. My understanding is, here's kind of where we're going to go, is for the short term, this is while we do the RFP, we will indicate that we will assume the responsibility for these employees, which means we'll have to kind of lay out the budget, and I can show you how we, how we get there. And when we look at these employees, we will look at those job descriptions, and besides the things that they have been doing, there may be a few other tasks we want to talk about. So, if you've got some ideas on kind of what you think that'd be, I'd like to take those in. And then, I can sit down with the county, too, and have that conversation, make sure that we're not at cross-purposes or so, we got a little negotiation to do with them and their funding. But I, I think we can work those, those pieces out. Depending, you know, again, laws were reasonable, I think they will be as well.
And I think the county understands we're in transition.
Yeah. And, and there may be some county assistance with all this as well, so who knows?
Okay. Any further on this? Is that your report?
That's all I have.
Okay. Now, as we move into, let's see, I don't have any appointments, so we'll move into Commissioner Communications, and Commissioner Nocita had a question about the public works facility process.
Yeah, I'll, I'll actually, I have two items tonight. The first one, I'll just update everyone on my conversation with City Attorney Kabeizman on this. My issue is with, it has to do a little bit with our move in, in our facilities here, and how we go about reviewing this appeal, and the paperlessness of, of what we're doing. Instead, I appreciate very much the fact that we each did not get a stack of 1,600 pages, you know, of record in this case. It's a very good thing. However, these don't work yet. I hope they will be working by the time, and it's maybe fortuitous...
December 2nd.
That, that we, you know, are holding this over. But the point I was making, and I made it to Mr. Drenlaw also yesterday, and to Mr. Kabeizman today, and the point is this, this application for this Public Works Master Plan came in last year. It came in under the old code. We adopted the new code on, in July of this year, I believe. So, what is now online is the new updated code. So, I, I have found it difficult in reviewing this appeal, the fact that I have not had at my fingertips the text of the code that this application is based on. I can't find it, it's not online. I, I asked, you know, Christina and Dan to provide me with a text of the old code, and I have it for myself. I wanted to, and the, the city recorder sent us an email with links to the, the record. Unless I've missed it, I don't think it's in that collection as well. And I just think it's important, as we review this, as quasi-judicial judges, as it were, that it's appropriate to have the full text of the code provisions that are applicable to this application, kind of like at our fingertips, when we deliberate the question, you know, during the deliberations of our review. So, that was, that was basically the point I had. I, I just wanted to, you know, see about having, as we review each of us, having, I prefer a paper copy of it, you know, if it, it can be put up on this monitor, if it's working, then. But the, the staff report, you know, for example, lists excerpts of the various code provisions, and gives some findings to them. But I've always felt it helpful to, you know, when you're looking at criteria, to have the context of the whole ordinance. And then, in, they were reviewing adjustments, and these adjustments to certain code provisions make cross-references to specific, you know, code language that is more than a few pages. So, that was, that was one that I, that was what I wanted to raise tonight, was just making sure, because we are deciding something under, basically under the code that, you know, we replaced in July, that we all have copies of the code that was in place at the time this application was made.
I have, I have one left over, so...
Yeah.
Paper copy.
My other issue tonight is a request from the folks down at the Law Library. Apparently, more than a couple of them park in our lot at 10th and Main. And now, they've, I guess they've had this concerns in the past as well. The, the city lot that we own, right next to Hops at 10th and Main, is not well-lit. And now that we've, you know, gone back to daylight savings time, there's kind of some safety concerns. And the librarian at the Law Library wanted to see if we might, you know, set up some, some more effective lighting for that lot during the dark, so that they are and feel more safe when they leave work in the, in the evening. And probably it's dark when they come into work in the morning, some of them. So, I just wanted to check on getting a, getting a light.
Safer lighting for the downtown area is in our parking study. We haven't really prioritized which lots, because there's really a number of needs. So, I'm not sure how...
Yeah, we had improved failure. Also, too, my understanding on this, and Ms. Crusher helped me out, this lot, I think, is, we have, we, we're not really managing this lot. I think this is, we've leased this to Mr. Hop, is it?
No, we, we issued permits for it, but the money from the permits goes to the Downtown Business Association. So, they're kind of...
See what can be done. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Reports then from Commissioners. Commissioner West?
I just have a short announcement here, and that is, something special is happening with our farmer's market. They're going to host a holiday or a winter market, the first time ever downtown Oregon City, this Saturday, from 9:00 to 2:00. And so, you might kind of wonder what they're selling at this time of year, with maybe some of the green vegetables not in stock, but there's mushrooms, and potatoes, and all kinds of legumes for your holiday dinners. And they're also starting with Christmas trees, and wreaths, and garden decor, paper whites, candles, and they have an assortment of meat products, cheese, fresh mushrooms, or wild mushrooms, I should say. And Le Provence will be there with all their bread, and I hope you can join us. So, this Saturday, and it's at 8th and Main, by Railroad Avenue, between Railroad and Main on 8th, that's a better description. So, thank you.
Hope you don't need your umbrella. Commissioner Neely?
The city manager myself, former Commissioner Damon Mayby, met with a representative of GO-21. GO-21 is a lobbying group for the railways that is looking for a tax credit for capital improvements on the rail lines, to make them function better, to deliver more freight in a more timely manner. Union Pacific is, of course, interested in this occurring. The, the reason for calling, making this request, to have this discussion with them, was that we're interested in, of course, like, the, the Amtrak, or whatever the faster rail system, faster rail system is to come onto that track, and that there may in fact be benefits to both of us to pursue along both lines, improvements that Union Pacific could make, and also improvements that could be made in, and of course, all of this is in the future, improvements that could be made on a rapid passenger line that could benefit both the freight rail and the passenger service. There were just initial discussions along that line. Union Pacific appears to be interested in this kind of dialogue, so I'm simply announcing that.
This would probably be a good time for a follow-up to that. Ms. Crusher and Larry Patterson, Dan Drenlaw, and I attended a meeting on, by, that ODOT was speaking for the high, high-speed rail. And ODOT told us about the application, the two applications, actually, correct me if I'm wrong, on any of these details. The applications they're making to the federal government for funding, for a study for high-speed rail. So, they, they wish to study both lines, so the, the old Oregon Electric line, as well as the Union Pacific line. The, as I saw it in that day, they, ODOT mentioned that the current line, the Amtrak line that we have through Oregon City, Union Pacific has said no to electric, and they've said no to solar. So, we all said, so does that mean you're already pre-prejudiced toward the Oregon Electric line? And they said, no. But I sort of read it that they, that they were. Now, if they get the funding, the environmental studies will take from two to five years. So, we're, we're a ways down the road, and then that has, and that's not the funding, that's just the planning. So, in the best of the scenarios, it sounds, sounds like we're, you know, into a decade before anything really happens. And it, it's very, very dependent upon the successful application of these funds. Anyone want to fill, fill in with others on that?
Eighty-five million.
Eighty-five million. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's huge.
Yeah.
And, yeah. Yeah, it's huge. It's a lot of area to cover. They're going all the way from, you know, the border to, border to border. So, yeah, to Eugene, actually, to Eugene, really, is the study. They're just, they're studying it through the Willamette Valley right now. And we express support to having high-speed rail, but we also suggested that we're the first city to be impacted, because we're about to make some improvements in our own stations. So, they said, kind of hang with us. So, that's, that's one. Secondly, we discussed at our work session, and, and will be beginning our city manager recruitment. The announcement will be going out through our HR department, and Jim Lefler, on December 1. It, because of the internet, it will be a national search, whether we want to limit it or not, it's already out, will be out there. And then, we'll be developing the process for public involvement, and the way that we will be screening and interviewing candidates, and we'll lay that out later. But essentially, we'll be taking applications until January 15th.
January 16th.
January 16th. If you want, you want to outline the, outline the process, go ahead. That'd be great.
We, the, back up here, okay. The recruitment starts, opens December 1st. We're going to be recruiting online, and through professional publications, and/or we're not using an agency, we're going through the city itself, and it'll be on our, our city website. We anticipate having the first screening of, of candidates on, on or about the 25th of January. We, we're looking at three weeks, January 25th to the, the first two weeks of February. We have a subcommittee that's going to be made up of commission, who will recommend the top three to five candidates for, for interview. And then, once we screen them, we will bring, bring in the final two candidates for, for final interviews, and those, those folks will be available for, well, actually, we do plan on having public, public input for meeting, meet and greets of the, of the finalists, the three to five candidates. And I think that was about it.
Yeah, that's, that's about it. It will be more, developed more fully as we go through the process, so. That's that. Secondly, I, I thought it was a pretty exciting, that I was invited to a ribbon-cutting for a housing development on Saturday. We cut the ribbon on a D.R. Horton project on South End Road. It's called Don Meadows, and it's been recently sold, so I don't think any of us knew it was D.R. Horton. But they actually had a lot of excitement, they're very, they're, they're very, they are affordable homes in the 1,700 to 2,300 square foot range, and layout looks very nice. So, I was delighted to see some action in the construction business. So, I just wanted to let you know about that. Senator Schrader should be dropping the bill this week, hopefully he did yesterday. We'll be hearing tomorrow with the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition, that will ask Congress for the authorization for the national, for a study, feasibility study for a national heritage area. And hopefully, you all have December, January, January 7th marked in your calendar, because that's when Senator Schrader will invite, I sent you an email on that, invite all of us, and Wes Lynn, and all the other stakeholders, to learn from the National Park Service what that means, and can get your definitive questions answered.
Did I say Congressman Schrader?
What did I say? Yes, Congressman, I'm still having back in the Congressman Schrader. Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Martha being the senator.
I know. She'll probably be there, too. But anyway, January 7th, for, this is for, this will be invited at this point. And then, that will be step one in the public rollout, and then all of you will be invited to join in, to develop what we want the national heritage area to be, both boundaries and, and what's included. Then, the last thing that I have to add is that we, you know, I put together an art committee to talk about art in City Hall, and what we've come up with is a rotating exhibit that will rotate... will rotate, I don't think we've finalized all the details quite yet, but the plan is every three, every four months, it will be administered by the Arts Alliance of Clackamas County, who will put together the jury. And the jury will include staff members and, not sure who, but particularly staff from City Hall, because those are the ones that have to look at it for four months. That's how it's done in other public facilities. So the first piece will be all art, Oregon City themes, and we have special places out there. It's very secure hardware that's done in museums that will be put up out in the lobby at the public areas, in both Public Works and, and out here. And then these, these pieces will be up. I'm not sure the first one gets juried, because it's a scramble to get contracts written and everything, liability, et cetera, done by our grand opening. But anyway, that's what's happening, and that will be, will be ongoing. And then there's talk also of someday, maybe looking at a public art piece that would be commissioned for someplace online, on the grounds, whether it would be up in the exterior entrance area, or on one of the corners. But that's what the committee's talking about. Yes.
I'm confused. I think you said displayed at Public Works in here?
Public Works facility, or the lobby there, is also a public place. Public art by our, public art or policy is to be in, not in, not in offices, for instance, it's supposed to be places that are readily accessible to the public, so...
But where in Public Works are we talking about?
Right behind the reception area.
You're, okay, you're talking about Public Works, right in City Hall?
Here, yes, yes, yes. Here at City Hall. City Hall Art, sorry. Yeah, sorry. I was probably confused. It's confusing to you.
Yeah.
So any questions about that? Okay, we'll, we'll do that. Any other reports then this evening? All right, we are adjourned.
Before we adjourn, I just had one last lingering thought. Do we have plans for a clock in this?
Don't you have a cell phone, please?
Well, yeah. That's, I just, okay.
Yeah, okay, great. We are adjourned.